We will reconvene our meeting. We were in closed session before, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on April 12, 2021, as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on April 12, 2021, as submitted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And we will go into, we have a couple of public hearings and some bonds motions that we need to have, so. Uh, let's see, we will open with a public hearing on the approximately $36 million school infrastructure sales services and use tax revenue bonds. So I think Kobe's online for anybody online for this public hearing, anybody public comments or we can start, anybody in the room, public comments on the bond hearing? Okay, no one in the room?
At this time, if there's anyone on the Zoom wishing to address the board on this topic, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. When recognized, please state and spell your name so it can be reflected in the official minutes. Seeing none.
Okay, we can move to the motions.
I move that the Board of Education adopt a resolution supporting the proposed issuance of approximately $36 million school infrastructure sales services and use tax revenue bonds.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt a resolution supporting the proposed issuance of approximately $36 million school infrastructure sales services and use tax revenue bonds. Roll call vote, please. Donahue.
Aye.
Parks.
Aye.
Prohaska.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Sancy.
Aye.
Whitman.
Aye.
Bradley.
Aye.
That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education adopt a resolution to authorize the sale and issuance of school infrastructure sales service and use tax revenue bonds, Series 2021, and approving the official statement.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt a resolution to authorize the sale and issuance of the school infrastructure sales services and use tax revenue bonds, Series 2021, and approving the official statement. Roll call vote, please. Parks.
Aye.
Prohaska.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Sancy.
Aye.
Whitman.
Aye.
Bradley.
Aye.
Donahue.
Aye.
And that motion carries. Thank you. And next, we will have, Mr. Till will review the amendment of the current budget.
Good evening. So this year, what we're doing is on page 17 of your packet is the amendment that was published in the Telegraph Herald on April 30. We are making the 2021 fiscal year budget that was submitted in April of 2020, and it's important to note that the amendment does not affect the levy rate or increased taxes. It's just an amendment. And so as part of our annual audit, your auditor is required to report if the district exceeds the amount budgeted in the four functional areas during that amendment that's listed on page 17. So for this year, we are increasing the tow support services line item by 1.5 million. And the reasoning for it had is it has to do, basically, most of the purchases have to do with bus purchases that were budgeted in 1920 fiscal year, but we did not receive the buses until the summer of 2020. So we have those buses that were received in 2020, plus the buses that we are purchasing this year that should come in toward the end of June. So we're doubling up some of those bus purchases. So that's the reason for the increase in the amendment. And then we had some small other increases as well. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
I move that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing on the budget amendment and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the budget amendment and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the budget amendment, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Public comments first.
Oh, public comments, I'm sorry. I skipped over that, too. Anybody with public comments, no anyone in the room on this issue alone? Okay, Kobe?
At this time, if there's anyone on the Zoom wishing to address the board on this specific topic, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. Recognized, please state and spell your name so it can be reflected in the board minutes. I am not seeing anyone.
Okay, I move that the Board of Education adopt the budget amendment for fiscal 2020, 2021, as published.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the budget amendment for fiscal 2020, 2021, as published. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, now we've got one on sale of a truck.
Truck.
Overview of sale, who's doing that? Oh, there they are, there he is.
There he is.
Bill.
The only mark.
Okay, go ahead, Bill.
There's something scary about that one.
Um, this is the sale of a 2008 Dodge pickup to a gentleman in Colorado. Uh, he bid $14,300 for it, and we're recommending the sale to him, and he's going to pick it up this week if you approve the sale.
All right, thank you.
I move that the Board of Education receive and file proof of the publication of the notice of public hearing on the sale of the Dodge pickup and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald.
Second.
We did that already.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the sale of a Dodge pickup and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That motion carries. Now we will do public comments on the truck sale.
Last chance to save a truck.
Last chance to buy the truck.
On the truck sale, if you want to buy the truck.
I'm going to Colorado, I could have delivered it.
Oh, well.
No, he's coming.
Kobe, over to you.
Again, at this time, if there's anyone on the Zoom that's wishing to address the board on this topic, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. Uh, when recognized, please state your name and spell it so it can be reflected in the official minutes. Seeing none.
All right.
I move the Board of Education approve the sale of the 2008 Dodge pickup with plow to Patrick Formby for $14,232.27.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the sale of a 2008 Dodge pickup with plow to Patrick Formby for $14,232.27. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, we'll go to visitors and open forum.
I move the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, I do know that we have some people here, and I'm going to recognize those on the agenda first. So we do have with us from the Iowa Association of School Business Officials, Nancy Blow, I believe is here with us.
Hi.
Hello.
Thank you for having me, and thank you for what you do. I applaud school board members everywhere. This has not been an easy year, and thank you for your time and effort and your service here. So I'm here tonight because we're going to honor Kevin. Every year, IASBO, look how red he's getting already. Maybe I should take the picture before you get cloridated. Every year, IASBO selects a professional leadership award winner, and it's the highest honor that our organization bestows upon our members. And the nominees are nominated by their peers, other members in the IASBO organization. And the award is not just a measure of extraordinary deeds or a lengthy career, it's recognition of school business officials who throughout their career and lifetime have demonstrated excellence in service to their school district, their communities, and their profession. So we present the winner with a plaque. So Kevin will get the plaque. And we also have a scholarship that Kevin gets to present to a student. So those are the two pieces of the award that I'm here to deliver tonight. But I found out that instead of me standing here and talking about Kevin, it's best if we consult his peers, and so I have some quotes from several of them, and I'd like to share them. This one is from Danelle. She says, "I was lucky enough to serve with Kevin on the IASBO board the last five years, and I have learned so much. Kevin is an amazing leader. He is patient, kind, approachable, trustworthy, friendly, extremely knowledgeable, and one of the best. Kevin unfortunately did not have an easy presidency, as I'm sure he will attest to. He was gifted with finding a new executive director," and I thank you for that. "And graciously accepted an additional term as president as our vice president stepped down unexpectedly. Not once did Kevin falter. He provided excellent leadership in a time of the unknown. He's a perfect recipient of this award, and I want to personally thank him for his service, not only to the Dubuque Community School District, but also to Iowa ASBO, his profession and his community. Congratulations, Kevin." And Danelle currently serves on our board, and many of the board members would love to have been here tonight to help present the award, but they also have their own board meetings, so they couldn't all come. So the second one that I would like to read comes from Jim Scharf. Jim was the previous executive director. He says, "I had the luxury of working with Kevin for several years while he was on the IASBO board, and I served as the exec-- excuse me, excuse me, the executive director. I was concerned at first because he never said much. After sizing up the responsibilities, he became a reasoned voice who offered valuable ideas, perspective, reasoning, and direction to help support the members and enhance the profession. I gained great respect for Kevin as one of those rare people you really should listen to." Jim Scharf. And then I just got a couple more fairly short ones. This one is from Brian Gubels, who is the president-elect on the IASBO board. "Kevin is a selfless leader. When IASBO needed him to remain as president for an extra year, he stepped up for the good of the organization. Kevin was never about himself, but rather always about the organization." This one is from Mary Beth Fast. "Kevin epitomizes all that IASBO stands for: integrity, humility, servant leadership, and knowledge. He's never too busy to help others and is a great resource, not only to the board, but to individuals. This award is well deserved." And then this one's from Melissa. She says that if the board is up for a good joke, and they're a friendly type, which I get nothing but friendly vibes when we call. She wants to let you know that Kevin never let us go hungry. Whenever we traveled to ASBO International, he always had triple D selections, and we ate well. We weren't always feeling safe where we were eating. The place with the bars on the windows had us a little freaked out, but it was the best pizza I ever ate. So, thank you, Kevin, for your service, and congratulations on the award.
Is that because you never stop, Stan? When you take Kevin to Des Moines, you never stop for food?
Never.
Running up things for our district. So we are very grateful for what he can serve with others outside the district, but we're really selfish and glad that he's here.
Well, thank you. This is very humbling.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you very much, Kevin, for all your work.
I think a great part of the award is that the organization gives a scholarship, and one of our scholarship members or winners is here from Hempstead. Jackson Bradley is going to receive a scholarship to you and I, correct, Jackson?
Yes.
Awesome. So that's one of the great benefits of the organization and...
Wow, that's true.
So Kevin, if you would get up and actually give him the scholarship, I'm going to...
Show him the money.
He doesn't want you to keep the check.
We're going to come all here for nothing. What's going to be his major, do you know, Stan?
Barmen Ed. And you're going to study accounting, is that right? Accounting.
And really, I couldn't do without the support of the board and Superintendent Ryan Gans, and of course, great teammates in my business department. So they deserve as much credit as I get.
Thank you so much.
That's very nice, Kevin.
All right.
Thank you for coming. You're welcome to stay, but...
Okay, um, we will, um, open this up, and I do have a first person to come up. For persons wishing to address the board can do so at this time, please state your name and your affiliation with the district, and try to limit your comments to three minutes, no more than three minutes, and note that we will not be able to comment on what you are talking about at this time if it's not on the agenda. So at first, I've got Mallory Jones.
Good evening. That was very hard on the phone. I don't have a pool word for anyone, so, sorry. My name is Mallory Jones. I am here on behalf of my daughter Mia, as well as other children in the Dubuque School District, to eliminate the mask mandate. I have already had the pleasure of talking on the phone with a few of you, and I've appreciated the time and attention I was given. I'm sure most of you here today believe it is in the best interest to eliminate the mask mandate for the children. It is May 10, 2021, and the data is all out. The kids are the least vulnerable to getting COVID, and the vaccine is available to all who want it. It is time to remove the masks from the children. The CDC guidelines for masks to be effective state the following: They must be worn correctly, and approved type, and washed daily. Now, we all know that none of the above actually happens when you put masks on children. Therefore, the masks are ineffective and harmful. The data continues to show that the number of positive cases is decreasing, which shows that removing masks from the kids would not be harmful for others. Yet today, with everything we know, children are still required to wear masks, including during physical activity. Should have never been allowed and needs to end today. I ask that you immediately reach out to the schools and tell them to move PE classes outside so the children can remove their masks and breathe. It breaks my heart every time my daughter tells me that she is unable to breathe during gym. She is too afraid to pull down her mask to catch her breath for fear she will be yelled at. Another major issue in keeping the masks on the kids is that their education has suffered. They're unable to connect with their teachers properly. My daughter can't see the smile on her teacher's face when she gets 100% on her spelling test. Which happens quite a lot. My daughter can't see the, oh, I'm sorry. She's had to be taught how to read facial expressions through eyes only. I personally don't want my daughter growing up in a world like that. When learning words and sounds, kids look at the mouths to see how they move, and when teachers have the mask on, they're unable to see this, and they have to try to decipher words through muffled voices. I can no longer stand on the sidelines and be quiet. I patiently waited for the vaccines to be available to all before I stood up for the children, and today is that day. On behalf of all the children, I ask that you remove the masks and let the children be children. If at the very least you are not ending the mask requirement, take the masks off during PE and outdoor activities. Thank you guys very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a little technical difficulty with Zoom there, so we will continue on with visitors and open forum, and if there's anyone wanting to address the board, can come up to the podium, please state your name and your affiliation with the district, and try to keep it under three minutes.
So can I take my mask off?
Sure, we can hear you.
First, I'd like to, first, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Kelleher on his award.
Can you state your name, please?
And Blake Jackson got the, was the recipient. I'd like to congratulate him, too.
Roger, could you state your name just so everybody knows who you are?
Yeah, I was just going to start that.
Okay.
My name is Roger Richard. I'm a school bus driver for Dubuque Community Schools. And on December 22, 2020, 40 bus drivers in attendance sent a letter and a follow-up letter to each member of the school board and superintendent by email about prevention and awareness in our schools. The sad thing about this was the fact that we were ignored and disrespected. It was repulsive and repugnant behavior on part of the school board and superintendent that we received no response, nothing whatsoever. It was also an assault to families and friends of those who died by suicide. We are employees with serious concerns. We are trying to bring attention to the school board and superintendent that students and former students were and are dying by suicide. We would have liked to have had to have heard back from the school board, but instead, we would have liked to have heard back from the school board about what your views were on suicide prevention in our school, but instead, we were treated like second-class, low-level employees from our esteemed leaders. We should receive the same respect that you expect of yourselves. Students are dying in our schools. It doesn't matter what schools or where the school is located at. When Columbine students died, did Dubuque school leadership have concerns and do anything about schools, about student safety? When Newtown and Marjorie Stormin students died, did Dubuque school leadership address this problem? I would hope the answer is yes. When students and former students die by suicide, does the school leadership do anything to address this horrible problem? I think I can safely answer that by saying, no, not really. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death for ages 10 to 34. That's 10 years old, which is, I think there are students who are 34. It is also the second-leading cause of death in the 10 to 14 age group for girls. Why would a 10 or 12-year-old girl think about or want to kill themselves? Three-fourths of all Americans are directly or indirectly affected by suicide, and these are all CDC statistics. We think we have a problem with suicide and mental health issues with students and former students in our school. If you think we have a problem, why don't you communicate with us? Apparently, you don't think we have a problem with suicide and mental health in our schools. You brought to your attention a student that graduated from Dubuque Schools in May 2020 and died by suicide December 2020. He was our coworker's nephew and a former coworker's grandson. A friend of mine went looking for his son one morning before school. He and his father found his son hanging by a rope in an outbuilding. He was a middle school student, a Dubuque community student. Another friend of mine found out her father raped her five-year-old son. Sheila could not bear that thought and tried to kill herself. They found her and took her to the hospital. When she awoke, she started pulling out the IV and other devices hysterically. They strapped her down and brought her back to health so she could finish her mission. She cannot look at her son ever again without feeling, without the feeling of guilt, anger, and insanity. Sheila died shortly after her hospital stay by suicide. Another friend of mine was the preacher's wife. The preacher left her for a lay leader of our church. The preacher was excommunicated and left town with his new girlfriend. Ruth Ann went to live with an elderly widow lady in her church. Ruth Ann could not bear the embarrassment and humiliation. She went back to the empty parsonage into the closet, and she put a .38 handgun in her mouth and pulled the trigger. As I mentioned, a young man hung himself was being bullied in school by his classmates. It's not very comforting being bullied, and suicide can be prevented. I received a letter from the district lawyer. None of you people who we sent the emails to could reply to the 40 employees who sent the letter of concern. I'm just going to read the last paragraph. I'm not going to read the whole thing.
It is after, it is then three minutes.
Okay, well, I'll just come back next, next meeting and I'll...
You can even read the, finish the last, the paragraph you want to finish. Go ahead.
Okay. "These letters and communications are being disruptive to the operations of the district and must cease. You have provided a member of the school board with your proposal, and it will be considered. Further attempts to contact Dubuque administration, the district administration, individual school board members, or district faculty or staff outside the public hearing or meetings will constitute harassment under the law, and we will be forced to take all action necessary to protect the interests of the district. Yours very truly, Edward F. Henry." It was just becoming a disruption to the operations of the district. I'd be like that explained, and the rest of the paragraph, too, but that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the board at this time?
I move the Board of Education...
That's all right.
Go ahead. Go ahead, I forgot.
Raise hand feature in Zoom. When recognized, please state and spell your name so it can be reflected in the minutes. Seeing none.
Wait, are you, are you wanting to do something?
This is next one, example.
Oh, the next one, okay. I'm not, everybody's moving around here so I can...
Okay. I move the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Oh, School Board Recognition Month, I think it's why you're getting up. Drop the gun on me. All right, Mr. Ryan Gans.
All right, well, this is my annual opportunity, and hopefully I do it more often than annually, and hopefully the community does it even more often than I do, but to thank you all for your service to this community. When you put your name in the, in the, on the ballot and took up the oath of doing what's right for Dubuque Community Schools and our students, I'm sure none of us ever thought about a pandemic, and I just want to, in honor of School Board Recognition Month, not only give you a certificate, which, which was a whole lot more than a certificate, but to thank you for the hundreds of hours that you put into making sure all of our students were safe throughout this pandemic, to making sure we have safety protocols in place, making sure first and foremost that we paid folks like our bus drivers when we were closed in the spring of last year, that people didn't go without, to really providing true caring leadership for our community, our employees, our students. I can't imagine what went through your mind as a, as a volunteer elected board member at the beginning of a pandemic, but you stayed true and you stayed strong, and our schools had what is, was a phenomenal year. There are things that we're hoping to are coming to an end soon, but you really have stepped up in a way that's historic, that is heroic, and it's important. So thank you for what you do as a school board member. So again, I have a certificate, I wish it was a lot more than that.
Thank you. Wow. Wow. Thank you.
I'll take two. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Again, I applaud you and thank you for all that you do to serve our community.
Okay, that takes us now to board salutes, and I believe we have a few out there. We will start with Ms. Parks.
All right, so we would like to say congratulations to the Sageville Elementary School for having its school-created feature film, The Time Capsule, selected for inclusion in the Julian Dubuque International Film Festival. The film, one in a long line of films produced under the direction of the school's technology coach, Jeff Dyer, was created by Sageville's fifth-grade class of 2019 and includes footage dating back to their time as kindergarteners in 2014. Students work on all aspects of the film, giving them an amazing real-world experience. The festival selection and showing was a wonderful opportunity for the students to reconnect and be honored at the festival, and it's a testament to the legacy of outstanding film productions at Sageville. So, congratulations to Sageville Elementary School on this outstanding honor.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Donahue.
I have one here for the district. Congratulations to the district's communication team, which recently won 14 state-level awards in the annual Iowa High, or Iowa School Public Relations Association Communication Contest. They need to shorten the name of that contest. Recognizing outstanding school communication in the state. Each entry was evaluated and scored independently by school communication professionals in Wisconsin and California based on a scoring rubric. At the highest level, the district received five Blue and Gold Awards, recognizing the best entries in the state, and received the top score of five out of five. These included the district's Return to Learn Plan, the Pave the Way Testing Day branding package, the Welcome Back video welcoming students back to fully in-person instruction, the Dubuque Schools Proud Video from last year's school closures, and the Eisenhower Respect Week video. Now, the district also received eight Awards of Excellence for various entries in the, in excellence in writing, infographic, and video categories, and an Award of Merit in the Branding Identity Package category. So, congratulations on these awards.
Great. Thank you.
I don't see Mike Sias.
He is at the middle or elementary school track meet tonight.
No, well, then, here you go. Let's go live to him. That's exciting. Very good.
It is. And Ms. Bradley, I believe you have one.
I do. Thank you. I'm delighted to offer a board salute to the district's music educators, the generous donors toward that program, community partners, parents, and students who all play a role in the district, recently being named as one of 686 schools across the entire country, and one of only four in Iowa, to be named a 2021 Best Community for Music Education by the NAMM Foundation, which is a national music educators' foundation. The award program recognizes districts and schools that demonstrate an exceptionally high commitment and access to outstanding music education. It aligns with goals for equity and access to music education for all students, and also with the national standards for music education. It seeks to support communities everywhere that are working in, to assure music education opportunities for all students as a part of a well-rounded education. This district has had a very long history of excellence in music education, and I would add an unwavering commitment to the arts and to music education, and this award honors that tradition. So, delighted to offer congratulations to all those involved in helping make music an important part of our students' educational experience, with special thanks to Shirley Davis Orwell, the district music coordinator, and to our entire group of district music educators who just do a magnificent job. So, bravo.
Thank you. Are we still okay, Kobe?
Yep, we're still fine.
Any other board salutes? All right. Thank you very much. And that takes us to our consent agenda.
I move the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Are there any items any board member wishes to have pulled separate? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And we have a slew of motions for facilities. Ms. Parks.
Yes, so quite a slew. So, let's go through these. So, first, I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the bus driver and bus attendant employees as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the bus driver and bus attendant employees as presented. Is there any discussion? Are we going to give an overview on any of these?
Yeah, I think Amy is gonna step back in, just trying to coordinate a couple of things. But I can talk to the, until she comes, but we received 1% new money this year. So, even though the SSA was 2.4%, because of our decline in enrollment, our new dollars were 1%. We balance that with the fact that we know we have to do the best we can by our employees. So, what you'll see in these recommendations is a 1.8% salary, of total package salary benefit increase for the following school year, so starting on July 1st. So, there's a continuity there in, in the percentage. There's a desire there on behalf of the board and the, and the district to show our employees we'll do the best by them we can, even when it's a, it's a tight budget. So, I'm just talking about them in general. So, if you wanted to hit any specifics, so, bus attendants, 1.8%.
Yep. We got all of our agreements to about the same percentage, so that was, that was one of our goals that we had for this year. So, and he's actually gonna grab me the specifics, so they don't have that in front of me, so I apologize.
But really, yeah, it really is what you need to know is the 1.8%.
1.8, yeah. That's fine if that's all, if that covers everything, 1.8% for all...
We talked about it in subcommittee last week.
Yeah, that's correct. Yep. And that's also, you know, their benefit package, too, changes, some changes to insurance and things like that.
So, it's total package for all of these that we'll be reading of the other groups as well?
Yep, absolutely.
Sounds good. Is there any other discussion?
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
All right. I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the custodial employees as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the custodial employees as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the food service employees as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the food service employees as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the maintenance employees as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the maintenance employees as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the secretary and administrative assistant employees as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the secretary and administrative assistant employees as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the Dubuque Education Association teachers, counselors, and nurses as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the Dubuque Education Association teachers, counselors, and nurses as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the truck driver and mechanic employees as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the truck driver and mechanic employees as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Amy.
So, maybe before Amy leaves, just real quickly, a thank you to Amy and her team, Rick, Kevin, a large group of folks who work really hard with the unions and associations to do the best we can to come to a fair agreement, and also to point out that in most school districts in the state, there are two or maybe three unions, and so we're near the top, which means, as far as number of unions goes, which means that Amy and her team gets worked, that's much harder by having somebody in her union. So, you did a great job this year, and I think it's a, just want to say thank you while she was here.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
All right. Next, I move that the Board of Education approve Change Order Number One to Communications Engineering Company on the Hempstead High School Intercom Replacement Project in the decreased amount of $37,043.60.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve Change Order Number One to Communications and Engineering Company on the Hempstead High School Intercom Replacement Project in the decreased amount of $37,043.60. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution offering for sale by public bid a 2002 Genie Lift and a 2005 Genie Lift, and set the time, date, and place for possible public hearing as June 14th, 2021, at 5:30 PM at the Dubuque Community School District.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the resolution offering for sale by public bid a 2002 Genie Lift and a 2005 Genie Lift, and set the date, time, and place for possible public hearing as June 14th, 2021, at 5:30 PM at the Dubuque Community School District. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Dubuque Board of Education approve the non-renewal of the lease with the Dubuque Soccer Alliance, which terminates by its terms at midnight on May 9th, 2023, unless renewed.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the non-renewal of the lease with the Dubuque Soccer Alliance, which terminates by its terms at midnight on May 9th, 2023, unless renewed. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to just kind of mention that I'd like to look at this as a win-win situation for both entities, and hopefully this will go forward.
We've had good conversation with the leadership at the soccer alliance. They appreciate the two-year notice, and I think they will work hard to ensure it stays a soccer complex and move out from under school district ownership. So, I do, I would agree that this will ultimately be definitely a win-win for everyone.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And then I have an award here to give to Mr. Rick Till for the excellence in, Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for the Dubuque Community School District for its comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2020. So, officially, there you go. I appreciate the hard work, the binders that you put together.
And I'd just like to say, as Kevin mentioned earlier, we do have a great team, and that really makes, makes the process go a lot smoother. So, without breaking with the people that we have on our staff, you know, this wouldn't be possible.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right. I think that's about it for that. We will move on to Educational Programs Policy Committee. Mr. Sancy.
Yes, at our last ed meeting, there's a few things that we discussed. The first thing, the superintendent talked about a new Equity Advisory Committee that he has with students. So, he brings together about 15 students from freshman to senior year, and they've come up with three priority initiatives that they want to focus on. Those initiatives are explore more diverse curriculums. They want to have more awareness and hands-on career opportunities, and they want to increase students' participation in diverse club activities. So, we're super excited about this new committee coming together and students offering ideas to make the schools better for them. We had an update about the Estor funding that's coming down, and this is real huge just throughout the community. One of the things that I hear is what is the district doing to help students recover? And so, there's a variety of, kind of a menu of things that we're doing to support our elementary, our secondary, students with ELL, special education, just really putting a lot of resources in place to help our students recover, not only academically, but also socially and emotionally. And we're not forgetting our teachers as well, just to make sure that our teachers have the resources that they need to deal with the, just the different trauma and brain health that is going on throughout this country. So, I thank the leadership team for just putting all of this package together to help all of our students and our, our teachers. We had an amazing young lady who stopped by, and she talked about an apprenticeship program that she's involved with that aligns with our strategic plan. She has a welding certificate that she was participating since her junior year at senior high school, and all the way up to now, she was able to not only get the certificate, but also she's employed full-time right now. So, one of the things we're talking about, not only getting more students into these skilled trade opportunities, but having a target focus for some of our underrepresented students or women and racial minorities. And so, she talked about her experience and some of the things that we can do to just to get more women participating in these amazing opportunities that pay very well. And then we also had one of our amazing teachers stop down to talk about just some of our practices to get updates on curriculum. Specifically, this was our social studies curriculum and what they're doing to make sure that we have just resources that not only reflect the students' interest, but also things that students want to participate in. And, and there's also an equity focus in there as well. And then we talked about some policies. And so, and I do have one recommendation also. I move that the Board of Education approve the official statement on the school infrastructure sales, services, and the use tax revenue bond series 2021.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the official statement on the school infrastructure sales, services, and use tax revenue bond series 2021. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. And we're gonna move into new business, but I would like to invite, we have some guests outside that I would like to have come in and... Just gonna, we'll just line up along the, along the line here, okay?
I don't like this one, honey.
It's gonna be fine. It'll be great.
All right.
Before, before you begin, I have a proclamation that we are going to vote on, and we will read and present to you, and then you can share with us what you have for us. So, I will start with a motion, please. I move the Board of Education approve the proclamation recognizing Marshall East Constitution Day and authorize the president and secretary to sign on behalf of the board. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the proclamation recognizing Marshall East Constitution Day and authorize the president and secretary to sign on behalf of the board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And I do have a proclamation that I will read. Whereas the citizens of the Republic of the Marshall Islands celebrate their Constitution Day on May 1st each year to commemorate the day 42 years ago when a new constitution was adopted and status as an independent republic was achieved. And whereas the Dubuque Community School District and our greater community benefit from a very vibrant Marshall East community that is rich with tradition, and where a celebration of Marshall East Constitution Day in the Marshall Islands would traditionally be focused on island culture with games of tug-of-war, husking a coconut, and canoe racing, and in the United States is celebrated with basketball, softball, and volleyball tournaments. And whereas the observance of Marshall East Constitution Day in the United States is held on the three-day Memorial Weekend, and the Marshall East community will recognize it with a celebration open to all members of the Dubuque community. Now, therefore, I, Tammy Ryan, on behalf of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education, do hereby proclaim May 1st as a celebration of Marshall East Constitution Day, signed this 10th day of May, 2021.
And I have a little presentation for you. And they have a little presentation for you.
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Roger Doyle. I'm a part of the last third year at the church, UTT Church here in Dubuque. Thank you for taking the time for us to present. We appreciate your support in the effort of recognizing Marshall East Constitution Day proclamation. As a thank you, we want to share a Marshall East song for the celebration. Thank you. Omomulata.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you for coming today, great job. Thank you for being in our schools.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Omomulata, thank you.
Thank you, have a nice night.
Thank you. Come again. We need entertainment. Thanks for being a little bit warmer.
That's right.
Thank you. Wait a minute.
Well, wait till you get up.
No, I'm gonna speak.
Oh, you are?
Okay, the next item on the agenda is to consider the board vacancy and applications to appoint a board, a board member to fulfill the term being vacated by Mike Donahue. We opened up the process for anybody in the community interested in applying to, it was open for 14 days after public notification, and we did receive one very well-qualified person who is willing to volunteer, to step forward, to fill the vacancy that we are reluctantly letting Mike give up, but we are very grateful that there are people in the community, and at least one in particular with a great knowledge of the district, Tom Barton, who has been a veteran of the school board for many years, has put his name forward to do, fill this vacancy. Now, it is a vacancy only until the election, which is in November, and then that seat will be open for two years, so it'll be, whoever runs for that seat will be running for the remainder of Mike's term. So with that, we only had one name, so that's, our discussion is with one person, so I think it's a pretty easy discussion to have, so I think we can go right ahead to the motion then.
Okay, I'll make the motion. I move that the Board of Education appoint Mr. Tom Barton as a director to complete the term vacated by Mr. Mike Donahue until a successor is determined and seated following the November 2nd, 2021 regular school war election.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education appoint Tom Barton as a director to complete the term vacated by Mike Donahue until a successor is determined and seated following the November 2nd, 2021 regular school election. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to say, Tom, thank you so much for doing this, we really appreciate your knowledge, your experience, and we welcome you back.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So Mr. Barton, you will be sworn in by Joanie after June 15th, when they're.
We will be swearing in within 10 days.
Within 10 days of this?
Correct.
Oh, well, okay.
Another trip back to the forum.
Wait a minute here.
You didn't expect that one.
All right, well, if there's anything you want to say, now's your time, otherwise we'll just welcome you back when you come back, it's up to you.
Well, I just had two months added on to this commitment, I just found out five seconds ago. I would like to say that I, when I heard that you had one very qualified person step forward, I'm glad that they backed out and was able to sneak in, so thank you. And there's no way you follow the Marshall East kids, by the way. You just come up, you just say thank you, you shut up, and you sit down.
Well said.
I like them already. Little humor to the organization. You think you'll do that until you're sworn in a new one?
We need the Marshall East kids every time.
Yeah, there you go. All right, thank you very much.
Tom, it was at 16 years you were on the board?
Two-year on expired from '01 to '03, and a three-year regular term from '03 to '06, and then from '11 through '15, and '15 through the end of '19, so four, eight, five, 13 years, and then this will be 13 years and seven, six and a half months.
Thank you for offering yourself to be a member. Mike, will you be at the June board meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Good, all right. I move the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student 814462 at this time.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student number 814462 at this time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Any board member or administrative issues?
Just the graduation that's listed on there, we're getting to that point where we'll have graduation. This year, we're going to hold it outside again, based on just wanting to have the most family and close relatives or whoever present, so every student was able to have eight tickets to the event, whereas if we were indoors, that would be significantly limited. So it will be Saturday, May 29th, at Dazzle Field, it will be 72 degrees, sunny to partly cloudy, no rain, no humidity. Senior will graduate at 10, and Hempstead will graduate at 3 o'clock.
And the rain date would be the next day.
Oh, yeah, we're listening, Jim. So we will do everything we can to hold it on this day, but we do have plans to do it the next day on Sunday, should we have lightning or a reason that we can't get in.
Could it be possible that you do one and then one?
It's possible.
Okay. All right. Any other board member administrative? Okay, there being none, we are adjourned.